But we're doing one of these right now in our house.
Oh, you are?
But it's not by the definition because we're going to have one kitchen. It's called even. And we've got our bedroom and we're going to build an addition on.
Good afternoon. Thank you for coming out today to share your thoughts about possible amendments to the town's current zoning bylaw, provisions for a residential housing type that is commonly known as an accessory dwelling unit, or as we here in Yarmouth refer to them in our zoning bylaw as an accessory apartment. Today's session is sponsored by the Planning Board and the Community Housing Committee, and it will be in person and remote, and I welcome those also who are joining us remotely and participating in that way. By way of introduction, my name is Joanne Crowley. I'm Chair of the Planning Board here in Yarmouth, and several members of the Planning Board are here. Susan Britta to my right, and next to her, Jim Saban. We also have members of the Community Housing Committee, the joint sponsors of this particular listening session. We have Marcia Bissell to my right, DJ Sullivan, and then Mira Sahenitz. Myra. Got the last name right. My apologies. The Chair of the CHC, Lorraine Doyle, could not join us this evening, but I'm sure she'll be watching in at some point. We also have members of the town staff who are here. Karen Green, who is our Director of Community Services. Kathy Williams, our Town Planner. Mark Grills, our Building Commissioner, all the way in the back. And Mary Wagon, our Affordable Housing Administrator. We've provided you with a listing of the topics we hope to cover today, and Kathy Williams will be presenting via PowerPoint each of these for comment. We will hear first from those here, and then we will move to the remote. We've also received some written comments, which will be forwarded to the Planning Board and the CHC, and we will review those at our next meetings when we deliberate on this. Just as a reminder, the purpose of this session, for the purposes of this session, the Planning Board continues to believe that there is a need for accessory apartments, ADUs, as another housing option. We believe that ADUs are needed in town. Our current bylaw has had a provision for accessory apartments in one form or another for almost 20 years, and we believe the time is right to update and improve these provisions, but we need your help in doing so. I'm hopeful that there are some areas that we can all agree on and others that we can reach a reasonable compromise on trade-offs. So let's begin. Kathy, I'll turn it over to you.
Welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming, and thank you for zooming in to our meeting here today. So as Joanne mentioned, what we're here to talk about are accessory dwelling units, or what are sometimes known, certainly in Yarmouth, as accessory apartments. And they're really meant to be a secondary, separate housekeeping unit that really is of limited size, and it has your own separate sleeping and cooking and sanitary facilities, and it can be located either within your existing single-family home, it can be attached to it, or it can be a separate structure off to the side. These are often referred to as in-law apartments, but they're really meant to be subservient or subordinate to the primary use of a single-family home. So Joanne mentioned some things with regard to a background. We do have a current accessory apartment zoning bylaw, Section 407, but it's limited to family-related or affordable with a capital A accessory apartments. So family-related, it really needs to be someone whose blood, marriage, or by law related to the property owner. Currently, we have about 52 of those in town. Sometimes some come on, sometimes some go off as people no longer need them. The affordable with a capital I-A, is that something that's a little bit more complex? It requires deed restrictions, limitations on the maximum rents that can be charged, as well as it must be marketed fairly to income-eligible households. Currently, we have no active accessory apartments that are affordable. So we tried real hard for many years, but it doesn't seem to really have been a success for the affordable, but appears to be a great success for the family-related. Back in 2019, the Planning Board did try to make some amendments to the accessory apartments by modifying the definition of family-related. It was really expanding it to more like long-term, family-like relationships, or more caregiving in nature. We also took away some of the more strict requirements of the affordable, so it no longer needed to be deed-restricted. You could rent it to anyone that you liked, that you knew. But we also did want to require some limits of affordable restrictions by limiting it to income-eligible people and limiting the maximum rent that could be charged. Unfortunately, that article was defeated at the 2019 Annual Town Meeting. So subsequent to that, there was a citizen petition to create an ADU bylaw that was submitted for this past fall 2022 special town meeting. The Planning Board held some public hearings, which we were required to do, and they identified a bunch of concerns on this particular article as written, and really noted that there was more need for public input. The citizen's petition has some really significant changes to the ADU bylaw, allowing them 100% by right, no owner occupancy, and also the ability to rent out both units at once. So some of those things were of concern. So the petitioners ultimately withdrew their citizen petition at special town meeting, but the Planning Board has since taken up looking into modifying the requirements for the ADUs. As Joanne mentioned, there really does appear to be a need, oops, there really does appear to be a need for more year-round rental units for a variety of users, not just for family-related or affordable. So we really are soliciting this public input and a bunch of different provisions or requirements that we could include in the bylaw. We want to provide, you can provide your comments orally today or in writing, or you can actually mark up some of the discussion topics form and put your answers there and leave them with us, or you can send them to me, Kathy Williams, Town Planner here at Town Hall, and/or my email address at kwilliams@yarmouthMA.us. So with all of this input, the Planning Board really wants to start looking at drafting some proposed amendments in the near future. So some of the ones, I tried to start off on ones that I thought we might all agree on, make things a little bit easier to smooth on to them. As Joanne mentioned, we're going to go over each one, each slide individually, and then solicit public comments from people present, and then also people online. So some of the parameters that we're looking at here is requiring that either the ADU or the principal dwelling unit shall be owner-occupied, either year-round, except for maybe some temporary absences during which the owner-occupied unit can't be rented. So if you're a snowbird and you live here, you know, most of the time, but then you go somewhere, it might be nice to have someone watching over your property year-round in an accessory apartment. We also want to be sure that the ADU is not intended for sale and shall not be placed into condominium form of ownership. We don't want to all of a sudden start having a bunch of duplexes all over town. We want to be sure that it's subordinate to the main, single-family dwelling. We also want to be sure that only one unit, either the principal dwelling unit or the ADU, may be rented out at one time. We're asking for a lot of extra things in our single-family neighborhood, so you can either rent out your house, maybe for a short-term rental, or you can have an ADU. But we don't want you doing both on your property. That's too much. We want to be sure that we are solving the problem that we have, which is the lack of year-round rental housing, so we want the lease agreements to be a minimum of 12 consecutive months. We don't want any seasonal, we want no short-term rentals, and we don't want subletting, where someone could sublet it out for the winter, but then get it back in the summer, and no room rentals. We really want this to be a tenant-protected, year-round rental property. So I don't.
Hand it over to Joanne, or to solicit?
Yes, so the way we'd like to conduct this hearing, this information session, is one that is, really relies on all of you and very little from us. We'd like to know what you think about these provisions and get a sense from you. Are they, can you give them a green light? Do you want to give them a caution? You want to give them a red light? It'll be important for us to hear from you what you think about these particular provisions and have that be important information that the Planning Board and the Community Housing Committee pay attention to. So we have microphones on either side. Both Mary and Karen have got microphones, and we can begin the discussion now if anyone would like to give a green light to this, a caution light, a red light, or other comment. We'd appreciate it. And if you would identify yourself and where you live, please.
Linda Boliger from Hyannis Park. I would love to give this a green light, but I have some caveats, and I speak primarily about Hyannis Park, but some of these may also be relevant to other coastal communities. We're under siege because short-term seasonal rentals are so hot and so profitable that it's of real concern to us and has been for some time. And if we can get assurances from the town that these won't be gamed, that there will be enforcement, then we would consider these. But right now, it's very hard for us to just give a blanket green light on this.
So your key issue is enforcement.
Absolutely.
Otherwise, these provisions are ones that are favorably, you're favorably disposed to agree to, because I guess, I guess what I'm trying to understand, to make sure we understand your comment, is that I would imagine enforcement would apply to every single element of the accessory dwelling unit. You know, the dimensions, where it, how big it is, we're just, again, because we're going to go through this, I don't know how many slides we have, Kathy, 20 or so? On each of the?
Yes.
If you will, the components of an ADU, and we're just trying to tick them off as to, should the owner be there?
Yes.
I think we'd all say, you know, that's what I'm hearing. Should it only be one apartment?
Yes.
So that's kind of how I'd like to go through this.
Let me just say that what we're seeing in our neck of the woods is vacation rental signs going up all the time. House transfers are going primarily to investors and large corporate rental vacation entities, and we're really scared. I mean, our goal is to build a year-round community, and we're struggling. And we feel that this could be our death knell if people are allowed to game it, or if there is no enforcement of, in terms of ownership, in terms of septic requirements, all of these things, as you said. There's enforcement, layers of enforcement that need to happen.
Thank you. Susan Britta has a question.
Can we ask questions of the?
Yeah, we, it's mostly about hearing from them, though.
Okay, but I just wanted to bring up something, I just wanted, and your concern about the notion of ownership, did you have any thoughts on the issue of temporary absences? We talked about that the other night at the planning. Did you have any thoughts on that, on the issue of temporary absences from?
In terms of snowbirding?
Yeah.
I don't have a solution for that, and I'm really curious to hear what other people might suggest about it.
And Linda, I want to thank you, because your written comments we do have from the Hyannis Park Civic Association, and we welcome the fact that you took the time to get in touch with us with those, and we certainly appreciate that. Thank you.
Is it someone Luke C.?
Yeah, Kathy, if you could handle that, because I cannot see.
Hopefully Dave can, let him speak. There he is.
Luke, yes.
Hi, can you guys see me or just hear me?
We can only hear you.
Okay. Doesn't appear to allow me to show myself, so I apologize for that. But I'm Luke Chapman. I own Delmar Vacations, which is a large vacation rental company on Cape Cod. And like the prior person who commented, I am in favor of substantial enforcement, specifically for the year-round lease. I think, so one thing you guys should know is we just, I just paid one of my staff members to research 12 towns on Cape Cod, the ADU program, and I'm happy to send that research to, I think it's Ms. Williams.
That would be great.
It's startling and unsettling and sad. Every single program has its purpose, you know, to have a 12-month lease, and the enforcement mechanisms are, at least penalties are sort of silly. They can be like $50 for an infraction. Lot of times, the enforcement gets focused on, you know, whether it has a proper kitchen or bathroom, and not actually on whether there's a lease in place. So, for instance, in the town of Orleans, there's 300 affordable housing units, and only 10 are not age-restricted, which means that 10 people in the workforce have units available to them in the town of Orleans. And I'm speaking approximately. It might be 15, but it's abysmally small. And in the town of Orleans, there are at least 100 empty ADUs. It's a completely unregulated program with zero enforcement. And so if I was going to leave the board with one action item, I would ask this. The enforcement should be by default, meaning it is too expensive to pay multiple town employees to monitor, send notices, call people in front of boards. In our research, we had the building inspector and the zoning department comment that they'd never enforced, not once, in Truro, in Orleans, in all these different towns. And again, I'll send all this to Mrs. Williams. But one concept that I think would help is this enforcement by default, which means your tax rate goes up by default, or you owe the town by default. Call it $5,000 a year, $3,000 a year, whatever it is. It is now on you to produce your 12-month lease to get out from under that penalty or that cost. If this concept was put in practice, it would mean the town clerk would immediately assign a cost, a penalty, a tax, whatever you want to call it, to the property owner. And only once the property owner has gotten out of their couch, found a tenant, got an assigned lease, and produced that to the town clerk, would this cost be eliminated. So no longer is it on the town to proactively go after non-compliance homeowners. It's on the homeowner, they're incentivized from day one to comply, and if they don't, the penalty is by default. I have other ideas I could share, but if that is the one thing you guys do, I think you will have a successful year-round leasing program.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mrs. Williams. I'll send you my notes otherwise.
Thank you. I think enforcement and how we do that is obviously something we need to work a little bit harder on, and maybe later, at some point, we can also hear from the building commissioner on his enforcement and staffing levels and that type of thing. As we do note, last year, we did get a second housing inspector, which is somewhat helpful, but we are still understaffed in different areas. I'm not sure about the legalities of some of the discussion topics today, but this might be something that we can talk about in further detail.
Okay. Mark, would, Mr. Grills, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, I hear that word. Hi, Adam Chair, Mark Grills, Building Commissioner. I hear the word enforcement thrown around so many different ways, and there's lack of enforcement and no enforcement. I think that people should understand what enforcement is before they start throwing the term around. Enforcement involves the complaint, has to be in writing, it involves a follow-up by us, we have to investigate to see that it's actually a violation. We send a letter to the owner, we send a second letter to the owner, we send a third letter to the owner, and then we start ticketing. So we don't have police authority, we can't just go down and arrest somebody or put a padlock on their door and stop them from entering their house. We have to go through a process. Sometimes that process ends up in small claims court. Some of the most egregious enforcement things that we have to do involve court. We end up in housing court. So enforcement, sometimes another issue will come up that's a higher priority than the one that you complained about, so your complaint doesn't get addressed right away, it gets pushed down the line. So that's, whether or not staffing would entirely fix the problem, I can't answer that, but there's a lot to enforcement. It's not just a matter of, hey, stop doing what you're doing, and they're going to stop doing it. That never happens. So when we talk about enforcement, I'll be happy to come up with the process for enforcement, maybe for the next Planning Board meeting.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you, thank you for that clarification, Mr. Grills. Any other, any other general comments on this?
I do want to emphasize that we do have a hard stop at 6:15, because someone else has his room booked, so we've got some other complicated things to go through.
I forgot, I did forget to mention that, Kathy. The Old Kings Highway Commission will be kicking us out.
So there's a bunch of general standards, a lot of these are already in our existing bylaw, just that an ADU shall be complete and separate housekeeping unit, only one ADU or accessory apartment per lot. We want to make sure that it is designed so that appearance is consistent with the single-family residence, and the ADU is clearly subordinate to the main building. So new entrances being on the side or the rear of the building, or like in Yarmouth, we have a lot of houses that have two front doors already, maybe they use an existing door in the building. Requires submission of site plans with parking locations shown, floor plans and elevations to the building department, because they are going to need to meet all building code and state and local regulations. So this is just one very small component when you start looking at the building code and what might be needed in order to build an ADU. We want to be sure that right now, if you have an accessory apartment and you sell it, you have to go back to the Zoning Board of Appeals and say, hey, wait a minute, I want to keep this up, and I'm going to have my aunt in it, and go through that process. This is something that, where the ADU would transfer with the property. So if you sold it to somebody else and you had a legal accessory dwelling unit, it would transfer to the next person.
45 days.
Right now, right. This would just be an automatic transfer. And then we want to be sure that maybe we're not putting ADUs in certain developments that have already gotten some different types of release, like a comprehensive permit, which is a Chapter 40B, which has already got increased density. If you already are a deed-restricted, affordable unit, you don't want to put an accessory dwelling in that. And lots that have more than one single-family dwelling, so if you have duplexes or multifamily, we don't want to start trying to add ADUs to those different properties.
Any comments or questions with regard to these provisions? I don't see anyone remotely, Kathy.
Yep, we're all good. All right, made it through a slide. With regard to parking, right now, in the bylaw, they require a total of three onsite parking spaces for family-related and four for affordable. So we really, if you want to have an ADU, are saying you need to have four parking spaces on your property. They can't be off-site, they can't be on-street parking, they have to be on your property. And one thing that we are adding in is that we don't want people parking on lawns. We want you to be parking in what should be a designated parking area, and that's why the location of the parking would need to be shown on the plan submitted to the building department.
Any comments with regard to parking, concerns? Okay.
So occupants, this helps give the Planning Board a little bit more direction. So right now, as I mentioned, we'll talk about affordable later, but right now, do we really care who rents out these properties? We want to expand the opportunities for different types of people to be able to rent a year-round accessory dwelling unit. So we're talking about eliminating the family-related requirements. And then what populations are we trying to serve? Do we really have a need for a lot of studios or one-bedrooms for singles or couples? Or are we looking for something larger? So who are we trying, what population are we trying to serve with the ADUs? So getting some input on that can help serve some discussions that we have later with regard to unit sizes.
Any thoughts on whether or not we should be thinking about who the tenant is? Right now, as Kathy said, we do define the tenant in other places on the Cape and elsewhere. The tenant doesn't have to, so to speak, self-identify. It can be whoever the owner of the property would like it to be. Yes, please.
I'm going to give you the mic.
If. I'm like Kulin Shah from West Yarmouth. My question is that when you say family-related requirement, if the family-related, are they going to have to sign a lease for 12 months? Are they going to be staying there, but are they going to, because they said the ADU? And if they're going to be occupying the ADU, would they require to sign a 12-month lease like everybody else does?
If you're creating an accessory dwelling unit for a family member and you don't want to charge them anything, you don't have to charge them anything.
No lease. Don't need a lease for a family.
Well, we need to say that in our bylaw.
Good question, yeah. I think it's, I don't have it in front of me. It's probably silent now, Kathy, on family. I know for affordable, there needs to be a lease, right?
Correct.
Yeah, because we need to see the numbers.
I believe it's Mary Wagon. I believe it is silent for a family-related accessory apartment. There's no lease required right now.
My name is Helen Shaw, and I'm, excuse me, Hyannis Park, West Yarmouth. If you, if we all decide that enforcement by default should become part of the statute, that requires a lease, or the owner has to get taxed. That was my understanding from Mr. Chapman. Is that correct?
I think what he was proposing is very complex, and I think we, I'm not sure about the legality of it, and it would require input from town council. I think what he's trying to say is maybe we don't rely on the hammer, we put some monetary skin in the game, so to speak, to get, to be sure that people are adhering to it. So that's something that we would need to talk to town council about. But the idea of the family-related, that's a good question, because we really hadn't thought about that.
I can exercise, if you were to do that, you'd have to provide some proof that they were a family member instead of a deed.
Which is what we currently require.
Yeah.
We currently require that, don't we, Kathy?
Mark, Mr. Grills?
We do.
The bylaw currently says that every two years, the building department has to inspect the family-related accessory apartment, so that's how we confirm who the occupant is at that time.
I think it's, we're so used to these things, we don't necessarily always relay all the information, but you need to be, your rental units need to be registered with the health department. And at that time, we can, maybe that's the place where we have them provide the affidavit and the lease for the 12-month lease, at least the layout and that they're going to be doing it. Maybe that's where some deposit or something goes until you provide the lease, or something along those lines. But there is a rental certificate process that's required for all rental units in the town of Yarmouth. Joe Glenn?
Oh, Mr. Glenn?
Yes, Joe Glenn, West Yarmouth, Member of the Vice Chairman of the Yarmouth Housing Authority. I think Mark and Kathy might have just answered my question in regards to inspections, because right now, we inspect rental units, we don't inspect private homeowners' units or houses. So I'm wondering if this would apply the same way. So now you're going to have people who own their homes, are their accessible units going to be inspected by the health department and the building department, but their main household is not?
That's what happens now, correct, Mark?
Correct. Every rental unit in town gets inspected at least once at the time of application, and if there's a problem, then we step up the inspection process for them more frequently. But yes, every private one gets inspected through either the health or the building department.
So the two years that you were talking about, Mark, that's something that's specifically required for accessory apartments right now, and it might be something we might want to continue?
That's through the family-related accessory apartment process, and that's one of the conditions as the result of receiving a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. For your special permit, you have to get inspected every two years.
That's when a lot of stuff gets caught with those inspections, those bi-yearly inspections. So that might be something we want to consider continuing. Are you all set, Joe?
Well, yes, so my question is, you know, you'd have the main household, and if you had family, so let's say I have my main household, I have an ADU, my household isn't going to be inspected, my main house isn't going to be a inspected, my main house isn't gonna be inspected, but my ADU will be?
Whatever you're renting, all rental needs inspections.
Okay, thank you.
As part of the building code, if you have an ADU in the basement, and you have a bedroom in the basement, your smoke detectors downstairs have to also set off the smoke detectors upstairs, so we will be confirming that everything functions in the houses it should be. Other than that, we wouldn't be inspecting different parts of that upstairs, the main dwelling unit.
So, affordability, as we mentioned earlier, the current accessory apartment has this capital A affordability requirement, which really requires fairly complex deed restrictions, limiting the rental rates and fair market marketing to find someone for that particular unit. So, do we want to, so, the planning board is really in their discussion, said this isn't working. So, they really have talked about not having this capital A affordable requirement, but then the conversation turned to, do we want to incorporate some level of affordability through setting income eligibility and maximum rental rates that could be charged? So, can someone hit 100 or 120 of the area median income and then pay a rent based on 100% of the area median income? So, these are just different topics, or should we let market rates rule?
Hi there. My name is Tom Howe, I live on Springer Lane in West Yarmouth. And also, as a full disclosure, I'm a real estate agent in town as well. I don't think there should be any income limits on either the tenants or the people that own the house that are gonna be renting it out. We have a severe shortage of rentals, and we have plenty of people that can afford to pay market rates, but there's no houses for them to rent. And when someone's gonna take this endeavor on and, you know, convert their garage, or put an addition on, or redo their attic, or whatever they're gonna do, if anyone's tried to do any building these days, you know what it costs. So, you know, they're certainly entitled to get something back for their efforts. And, you know, a lot of these folks that may do it, I would say, might be older folks, much like myself, and, you know, maybe they're doing it to supplement their income in their later years, which is absolutely fine. And I don't think there should be any income restriction on either the leaser or the lesee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay.
So, we're gonna move on to some other topics, and just thought it might be good to let you have some useful definitions. This is terms that we banter around in the planning world all the time, but may not be known to the general public. We talk about dimensional standards, and these are really talking about development requirements that establish certain parameters, like what's the maximum height of the building can you have? How far do you need to be with your building to the property line? You know, what's the maximum building coverage? I mean, how big can you cover up your entire lot with the building? Minimum lot sizes that you need to have, and then also minimum frontage along a street. So, one of the other things that gets a little bit more complicated is grandfathering or non-conforming lots or structures. The town of Yarmouth has a lot of these. So, these are basically lots and/or structures that do not meet the current dimensional requirements of the current zoning bylaw, but they were in compliance at the time that they were formed, created, or the structures were constructed, or some relief was given. So, they're allowed to continue with what they have, but they're considered grandfathered or might be non-conforming lots, and then structure itself might also be non-conforming. We also talk about things like something that's by right. This really means that the use and the development does not necessarily require relief from the zoning bylaw, and can proceed to the building department for a building permit. Still need to meet all of those building code, fire alarm, and other state and local requirements that Mark was talking about. Something that's required by special permit, this requires some type of relief from the zoning bylaw, and this is typically done through the Zoning Board of Appeals or the ZBA. Sometimes it's a planning board, but most of the time, and certainly with the ADUs, it would be the Zoning Board of Appeals. And this requires a publicly noticed public hearing, and all the abutters within 300 feet actually get a notification in the mail. So, you'll know that your neighbor is proposing something on their property if a special permit is required. You may not know that if it's happening by right. And just to give you a little idea of what the criteria is for special permit approval is, no undue nuisance, hazard, or congestion that will be created, and that there will be no substantial harm to the established or future character of the neighborhood or town. Right now, all of the accessory apartments are special permit, and most of them fly through pretty easily through the Zoning Board of Appeals. Sometimes they have little conditions, depending on neighbors who might have come, maybe it's something simple like a fence, or some landscaping, or something along those lines. We could also include some of those provisions in the bylaw if we were to go by right, too. So, something to think about. So, really, we're looking for any input you guys might have on what you think the minimum lot size should be. So, if you're gonna have your single-family home, and you're gonna have an ADU on it, do you think there should be a minimum lot size? Right now, it's 10,000 square feet. And then, the other thing is, is do you want to specify a certain lot size that's allowed by right? So, we're comfortable with these larger lots being by right with an accessory dwelling unit, but some of these smaller lots, we think that maybe those might need to be by special permit.
Any comments? Yes, please, Ms. Volger.
I think, I'm pretty sure that most of my neighbors are gonna agree with me on this. There has to be a minimum of 10,000 square feet. If, as far as by right is concerned, we feel that the neighbor, the abutters have to have some say. And we think that if the lot is very large, and I don't know what definition very large would be, quite honestly, but it should be discussed, and if the lot is large enough, then we might consider a by right.
Just to give people an idea, 20% of our residential lots are less than 10,000 square feet, 80% are less than 20,000 square feet, and 90% are less than 30,000 square feet. Our current residential zoning, the main districts are R25, which is basically south of Buck Island, which is a minimum current lot size of 25,000 square feet, so slightly over half an acre. And then, the rest of the residential is RS40, where the minimum lot size is 40,000 square feet, which is almost an acre. So, you can tell by the percentages there that we only have like 6.5% of all of our residential properties are over 40,000 square feet. We don't have a ton that are currently complying 100% with the bylaw, but we certainly can have that discussion with regard to what would be an acceptable lot size. I know like in Brewster, they've set 30,000 square feet as being by right.
Any comments in the audience? Yes, please.
John Deliso. Could I stand at the podium? I've just made some notes that will help me as I read.
Sure.
John Deliso, Bay Road. I was at a prior hearing on the subject, and been giving a significant amount of thought to the issues. I'm a retired lawyer, admittedly not a zoning expert. But, I know a little bit about the evolution of law, the adjudicatory process inherent in American law is the concept and the process of review. I took a look and found that, just coming up, two months from now, 77 years ago, it was on February 12, 1946, that the town of Yarmouth adopted its first zoning bylaw. That's a byproduct of trying to make the community better, no zoning is tantamount to the Wild West. I think it's fair to say that, coincidentally, that's more than my lifetime ago, or more correctly, I am older than the zoning bylaw. The zoning is serious business. This board and its predecessors have taken the responsibility quite seriously. The zoning boards are charged with balancing, balancing the needs of the community with the needs and rights of the existing landowners, while at the same times being conscious of unintended consequences, not curing one problem to create another. The zoning board has a mandate to protect the neighborhoods. Relinquishing this oversight is something that should be considered very carefully. Doing something as a matter of right will change the character of the town. It may take five years, 10 years, 20 years, but it will happen. This bylaw that's in place has served the town well, and does allow for ADUs. So, I'm speaking to the whole issue of doing something by right. Allowing for the careful balancing of all the interest in each property is a good idea, as opposed to creating a system where it's done automatically administratively. One of my concerns here is, should we do this by right? What are we gonna say to the people who saved, who invested, and worked hard to buy a single-family home with an expectation that the zoning would remain as it was when they bought? I'm not sure I have an answer for that. What I do think is that the current housing problem, admittedly it's significant, doesn't lie, if you will, by changing the existing zoning with regard to single-family homes and the existing neighborhood structure. That is, in fact, the backbone of the town. So, I'm suggesting that, over time, other alternatives be looked at, and that there not be a rush to judgment. So, I appreciate very much the opportunity to share my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Deliso.
I'm sorry, before Tom talks, I just wanted to note that I did include this, just to give you an idea, of all those little tiny little rectangles, those are the lots, the lot sizes in the town of Yarmouth. We are very, very dense, and you can kind of see in this whole area, very dense area. And then, when you start getting up into the captain's villages, very dense. We have probably two to four units per acre, even though we currently have zoning that's like half an acre to an acre per lot, so just wanted to get that in.
You say, the chart says existing small lots, is there a cap to what, how, those lots?
Say that again?
The yellow area, they...
That's 25,000 square foot minimum, right now.
25 or less.
So, if you created one right now, it would be 25,000 square feet, but you can see, most of those are significantly less than that, to the 10,000 to 20,000 square feet. This was, obviously, you're near the water, that was one of the first subdivisions that were done, well before any zoning was in place, and they were all just 80 by 100, 80 by 100, 80 by 100, all the way down the street. So, I'm sorry, Tom.
Yes, can I...
Go ahead, Tom.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, thank you very much. Tom Niconello from the very historic village of Bass River. And first of all, I'd like to thank you and all your board members and staff for the exceptional hard work that you're doing for our community. As you know, as we were all younger, and we just got our driver's licenses, there was probably about 17,000 people, maybe 12,000, 15,000, now we're pushing 25,000 people, and our landmass is only, you know, 28 square miles. And, you know, you can't blame everybody, because this is such a beautiful place you want to live, that's why I'm living here. And it is just so important that we take our existing bylaw, and we try to modify it, not change it, just modify it for the conditions that we are in today. And as we all know, the conditions of today are not the conditions of yesterday. My comment is, you know, we do have some people, maybe 1,000 people in town with their 1,000 parcels that have over 30,000 square feet. And I'm not sure if everyone understands the half-acre is, you know, 20,000, three-quarters is 30,000, full acre is 40,000. So, if I have an acre of land which is over 40,000 square feet, and I am, you know, eagerly willing to help the community and put an accessory apartment on the property, which doesn't really, you know, as our wonderful building commissioner, and he's a great guy, he's always trying to make sure that everyone understands how the process works, and his job, just to try to enforce safety, people, you know, don't understand that safety comes with prior experiences. And when people illegally build and don't meet the code, there's, you know, human life's a danger. And, you know, sometimes we just don't understand that, that's the building code. As a builder for many years, we've done things a lot differently, only to improve our community and the safety for everyone involved. So, if I have an acre of land, and I want to put up, which I think in my mind should be 1,000 square foot, not 900, you know, with five-foot, six-foot screen TVs today, and the split units, you know, 800 square foot apartment doesn't give you a lot of wall space, right? So, if I have an acre of land, and it's conforming by the setbacks allowed by us to build, then, you know, that should be a by right. And if we allow that, then, you know, that's 1,000 parcels that could help the community. Now, on most of, some of our other villages are very dense. You can't put an ADU on something that doesn't even conform to the property. I mean, some of those houses don't even have closets, it's just, it's amazing, and there's, you know, they're all cookie cutter lots, and they're beautiful places, they were designed as cottages, and everyone wants to live here, and now they're making them their homes. Those properties are excluded from the ADUs, just because the common sense says you can't do that, it doesn't handle. And most of all those communities are so close to the water that you can't do it, because we don't have sewer, which that's a whole nother weekend anyways. But, that's my comment, Madam Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Niconello. Thank you, Kathy.
The next topic is actually unit sizes. So, the first question that we're kind of looking for some input in is, do we want to limit ADUs to studios and one-bedrooms, or are we interested in having something larger, like a two-bedroom? Right now, our maximum unit size is 800 square feet, should that be, continue to be our maximum unit size? There's been some suggestion that maybe we modify it to require an ADU to be not larger than 50% of the habitable floor area of the principal single-family home that's there right now, or 900 square feet, whichever is less. So, it could never be more than 900, but it would probably be less than 900 square feet, because it would be 50% of the habitable floor area. And do we want to set some type of minimum unit size? We currently don't have one in our bylaw. We did include one in the 2019 amendments of 400 square feet, but we do not have one right now. So, if we do want to include a minimum unit size, what size should that be? To give people a little bit of an idea of different unit sizes, on the right is a 300-square-foot studio, in the center is a 550-square-foot one-bedroom, and on the left would be the maximum size, a 900-square-foot two-bedroom apartment, which is fairly large. Just giving people an idea of the sizes.
Any comments, yes?
I just have one quick question. I didn't see in any of these, and maybe I missed it, correct me if I'm mistaken, is there a limit of the amount of people that can live in one of these things? Or is it just based on the square footage in the bedroom?
We had talked about occupants, but right now, I think we ended up getting back to number of bedrooms. Typically, it's two people per bedroom. It changes a little bit, it could be less if you only have a 10 by 7, Mark's giving me the what-what over there, 10 by 7 size that could only have one occupancy, and you might be able to get slightly more if it's a slightly larger, but a 10 by 10 bedroom would be two people.
Any thoughts on minimum size? Should we have a minimum size? Maximum size? Again, currently in the bylaw, it's 8,000, 800. Dreaming of the house I'll never have, actually, I would never want a house that big. 800 square feet. Yes?
Yes, Helen Shaw again. I'm thinking about how many people can stay in these units. And our experience in our neighborhood, and we live on Lewis Bay, the number of people that renters put into those units is alarming, if you could only see it. that renters put into those units is alarming, if you could only see it. And going back to Mr. Grill and the whole thing about enforcement, I know it's impossible. I used to serve on the Board of Health and I know how hard they tried to regulate that, but it's impossible. So I'm not sure how to go about this, but it is a problem. And I just hope that it can be resolved.
So do you think smaller units might make more sense, or?
I wouldn't go that far. I think if an owner has the desire to put on a two-bedroom, there are certainly people within our town who need two-bedroom, fine. But somehow, two-bedrooms could become living space for a lot of people, maybe even two families. There's hardly any way to regulate that.
Difficult right now. We've got houses, right, people own and rent now that are already, 15 people in a three-bedroom house.
It, hopefully it's... Yep, it is, it's a current problem now. You're absolutely right.
Anyone have any input on the minimum? Any, any thoughts on the minimum?
Okay.
Nope.
All right.
So this is kind of where we get a little bit more into the discussion. I think we've started this discussion already. What might be some of the limitations we would want on, to put into the bylaw to allow something to be by right? And we've given some options here and we kind of really want to hear what you have to say. As Tom was talking about, you know, if the ADU is located on a property that meets the current lot size requirement, maybe that's something that might make sense to allow an ADU on. Or maybe we feel like, you know, maybe 30,000 instead of 40,000 square feet might be something still large enough to accommodate an ADU. You know, if the ADU is located in the existing building, you're really not going to see any significant change from the exterior. Obviously, there'll be some more cars that need to be parked, but maybe that's something that we're comfortable allowing, allowing by right. And maybe if you are expanding the ADU by, by building onto the back of your property or a separate structure, maybe as long as that meets all of the current setback requirements that we were talking about earlier. How close to the property line can you put that building or that expansion? Maybe that will make us feel a little bit more comfortable because that part of the building is going to be further away from, from your neighbors. We do, and I'll show a little, a map here in a second, the ADU, maybe it can't be located in the Zone 2 of our drinking water wells. That's really kind of like the area where the water is sucked into our wells and that's what we're drinking. Or do we want to do some of the size limitations? You know, if it's a one-bedroom or studio, maybe that's something we're comfortable by right. But if you want two-bedroom, maybe we want to see a little bit more detail and maybe that's something that you feel more comfortable with having a special permit. Or any other ideas? We're trying to develop some criteria, I think the board is, that might, people might feel comfortable doing by right. So we'll have some criteria by right and then we'll have some criteria saying, well, we're not quite fully comfortable with these things. So, but we don't want to deny it because we think you might still be able to do a great ADU on this property, but we want you to go and get a special permit.
Any thoughts on this?
John Deliso, again, I don't want to be redundant, but I don't know the right number, but I think the town has something like 10,000 lots in, in that area. So that would suggest there are 10,000 possible permutations and combinations. When something is done by right, it's the right of the property owner of the specific lot in question. But there is an obligation, not only on the part of the board, but citizen to citizen, with regard to all the other property owners, not only in the immediate abutting area, but in the town at large. So I just want people to be conscious of the magnitude of an at-right decision. I, I think it's one that deserves potentially more consideration, more input than it's getting. Thanks.
Anyone else? Again, what we're, what, what we had heard before is that the trade-off there would be lot size. In some of the towns we've looked at, their provisions, if it's over 30,000 square feet and it's, everything is conforming, you, it could be by right. But there's that trade-off. If you want it by right, it has to be a certain lot size, has to be conforming. To try to get to that balance, we've seen that other, that's the, the way in which other towns have addressed this issue. Yes?
Just one question, just, um...
Right into the mic.
One question on a non-conforming, you know, say a house was built in the 60s or whatever and has, doesn't meet the setbacks. Does that mean they could never put an ADU on? Or would they get, have to get a special permit or a variance? Well, how would that work?
I think that's something where, that the board is talking about, that might be something that requires a special permit. Because they do, they would be closer to the neighbor with the, with the expansion.
Okay.
Susan?
Kathy, under the, under the section, other ideas, a couple of the towns on that chart that we had, actually had a restriction on the zoning board for being prohibited from granting any waivers. So that might be something we could also put on as, if, if we were going to consider by right with the holistic restrictions, maybe that's something we could also add to the list, that if you want to do it by right, you cannot go and try to get a waiver for any of the, any of the above restrictions. That might be something that would add to the conversation if people...
Yep, so no...
Because once you can go and get a, get a waiver, it doesn't matter whether it's a permit or not. If you get a waiver, it, the restriction's useless.
If I could maybe give some additional information, just the number of parcels that are considered residential. There's about 13,000 in town. Only 845 of them are greater than 40,000 square feet and 383 are between 30,000 to 40,000. So you get closer to the number Tom Nicconello was talking about, of people who may be over 30,000 or something, you might be able to. 20 to 30,000 is 1,447. The 10,000 to 20,000, that's the big ticket item, that's the 7,740 lots are kind of fitting in that 10 to 20,000, just to give you an idea.
We have two people from the audience just that want to comment more on this.
Okay. I'm sorry. Linda, Ms. Volger?
I feel very strongly about, in, in my opposition to by right. Even in a very large lot, I still think that the abutters have rights as well and they wouldn't want those rights relinquished.
Thank you. Yes?
Can you say your name again?
Yes, it's Tom Haugh, H-A-U-G-H. I'm thinking about that with the, the house that doesn't meet the current zoning. And I'm not saying I'm leaning either way, but that might be something to, I guess, alleviate the concerns of some of the neighbors. If you said if the house does not meet the zoning of today, then it wouldn't be allowed. I'm not saying we should do that or you should do that. I'm just saying, I think a lot of the people that, the concerns that I see is they're thinking that every square inch of a lot is going to have a, have a building on it. And I know there are lot, you know, maximums and stuff like that, but if they're already there and then you add another, you know, two or three people to the mix of this small house on a small lot, you know, it could get chaotic. Again, I'm not making a, saying I would want it either way. I'm just saying that's definitely something that should be maybe tossed about. Thank you.
Glenn Beasley and Tom Nicconello? Who's the Catholic?
Yes.
Glenn Beasley?
Yes, hi. Good afternoon. My name's Glenn Beasley. I live in Yarmouth Port. My, a couple of questions have been answered, especially so, my opposition really starts with waiver. And I think no waiver would at least put the power of granting licenses back in the town and would make the residents not have to face levels of hearings and, you know, writing letters and all of those things. I do have three questions and I'll make them very short. One is on owner occupied. And when you mentioned the word "snowbirds," does that mean the owner occupied is a resident and therefore a voter of Yarmouth? Or does that not necessarily have to be?
I don't think we've actually determined that right now. I think a lot of people may have their residency for tax purposes down in Florida because the tax rates are better. So they need to live down there for a certain number of months, but we really haven't made a determination on that. So any input would be good.
So I think short-term, well, I wish I was one of them. I think for short-term, that needs to be considered strongly. Because that's every year, six months and one day away from the property. And that would say, the second question I have is on the leasing. Would this allow subletting?
No.
So I think that has to be specific. I think the other thing is on, more on some of the issues that we're facing today. How does it handle with the historical commissions when we change the color of our door or add a roof to our deck? We go through the dance and a whole series of, from appearance to zoning. How would these properties walk through and, is that part of the waiver process?
There's no waiver from Old Kings Highway. Old Kings Highway regulations are separate from zoning. So if you live north of 6 and you want to add an ADU, you're going to need to go through Old Kings Highway. I'm not sure if you do an ADU inside, but I would think that they would want to know about the parking. So I would probably say that they would be required to, to give some type of certificate of appropriateness for any, any ADUs north of 6.
Okay. And my last question is on septic. Especially with all the latest information going out on changes in rules, is this going to have a major impact on your plan?
I think our next...
The ADU would be part of my, I'd say attached to my home, therefore using my septic system.
Yes. Wastewater's kind of our next topic. I don't know if we want to finish this one and then we can talk and you can maybe ask again.
Go ahead. Yeah, why don't we, we're going to, Mr. Beasley, we're going to continue, we have a slide on wastewater. It's coming up, if you could hang with us.
I will. Thank you very much for having the meeting, too.
Yeah, thank you. Tom? Nicconello?
Yes, thank you, Madam. I was wondering if the building commissioner could just verify the lot versus the structure size? Because, you know, if we have the very small lots, we're, we're pretty much limited to what we can do now because we can't put, as that gentleman was saying, you can't have every inch of parcel with a structure on it. And we do have a certain amount. And I was wondering if the building commissioner could elaborate on that. Thank you.
It's 25%. The building can't exceed 25% of your lot. It should be noted, though, that, you know, a lot of our residential structures are ranches, so they're single-story. That doesn't preclude somebody from going up. We have, are typical, and Mark may correct me, is about 35 feet maximum residential height. It's measured in a bunch of different odd ways. Habitual attics and basements are a little bit different, but generally about 35 feet in structure. And you'll find that a lot of the areas south of Route 28 is also in our FEMA flood zone. So if someone is expanding more than 50% of the value of their structure, they're going to need to bring that up, at least that expansion or that separate ADU up to compliance, which may result in some height increases from either the ground around there or, and/or the structure itself.
Anyone else, Kath?
No.
Okay.
So we can't forget wastewater and we can't forget the issues that, that we have with our drinking water. We want to make sure that we have our sole source aquifer and we're protecting that. And we also have, and you can see on the left there, that's a Zone 2 of our drinking water well. So everything that's located in that little cyan color, that's where all, all of our drinking water is being drawn from. So all of the captain's villages, you can kind of see in the center area there, there's a lot of density and things going on in this particular area. I don't know if you've been following the Board of Selectmen, we've had some problems with our drinking water. We, we had a couple articles on special town meeting for treatment for PFAS, which is a contaminant of emerging concern. So we have some other issues with some nitrates that we need to keep an eye on. So there's, there are some concerns. But we also have a problem with our estuaries. And on the map on the right is identifying the impaired estuaries. We have Lewis Bay, we have Parker's River, and then we have the Bass River. Most of it is south of Route 6, but as you can see, some of the Bass River goes up all the way to Route 6A. There's only a certain section of our town that goes, goes towards the bay, which is not currently impaired. So much of our residential neighborhoods are either in an impaired estuary or in the Zone 2 of our drinking water wells. And most of these areas, other than, obviously, we're concentrating our Phase 1 along Route 28, but most of these residential neighborhoods aren't going to see sewerings for 10 or more years in the future. So how do we address the need for more housing units without negatively impacting our water resources? One of the things that we might be able to do is say that you can have an ADU, but you can increase the number of bedrooms on your lot. So if your, if your current building has three bedrooms on it, you're going to have to eliminate a bedroom within the building and put it in your ADU. That way, the number of bedrooms are staying the same. It doesn't mean that we're not increasing nitrogen load because we probably are, because we're adding more people, more flushes, probably maybe even to, you know, houses if you're a snowbird, not being used all year round. Or maybe you have, right now, the average number of people per housing unit in Yarmouth, 2.3 people. So if you're adding another person or another couple, you are adding more people and more flushes. But at least this kind of would give us a general idea, or tampering with regard to the number of bedrooms and the number of increases in wastewater flow that we might be having. And then also a question, if anybody has any, any other ideas for how we might be able to do this. One other thing that I might want to mention is that HAC did do an investigation with some other communities around to kind of get, well, how prevalent is the creation of ADUs once you have these different bylaws in place? Looking at, in 2022, the ADU applications in Sandwich were four, in Mashpee, there were five, in Brewster, 11, Chadman-Orleans, there were one, in Eastham, it was four, Barnstable had the most with 24, and then Falmouth with eight. So this isn't like something where you're getting hundreds of these per year because they are very expensive to construct. I think the ones that might be created within an existing dwelling unit are probably the most cost-effective versus adding actual, actual square footage.
Solutions, people.
Yeah, can you fix this for us? Give us the magic answer here.
I think if they do the same as they do now if you put an addition on your house. If you put an addition on your house and you add a bedroom, you have to redo your septic if it doesn't meet the amount of bedrooms that you're going to have on the house. In other words, if you have a three-bedroom house and you add a bedroom to make it a four-bedroom, you have to make that septic a four-bedroom house. And you should have to do that for an ADU or, like you said, get rid of a bedroom, like you can do that as well. I, I don't see anything wrong with that process, the same as you would do for just adding an addition onto your house. You could put a giant addition, six bedrooms on your house, lot size permitting, but you'd have to have a septic that would, that would service that. I think that would make sense, just for an ADU.
I think those rules are changing as well. But one, one thing to note is, everything that's in the blue here in the cyan, that's in the Zone 2. And Title 5 restricts you to your grandfather number of bedrooms that you have right now or one bedroom per 10,000 square feet. Most of those bedrooms within the Zone 2, and that's where people kind of say, well, you're not going to be increasing any bedrooms, but only right now is it required in the Zone 2. The question is, is do we want to make that requirement part of the ADU bylaw so that we're not, I think we might scare people at town meeting if we're saying, we're going to be adding, you know, two extra bedrooms to every septic system that's eligible, you know, outside the Zone 2? Because there's plenty of areas where it is possible to increase the amount of septic, but then that's increasing even more nitrogen that's going to our impaired estuary. So it's kind of a balancing here of trying to address a critical need for some more year-round rental, but not doing something that's going to have an even more detrimental impact to our environment.
Go ahead, Kath.
Is that it? All right. And then the next one has to do with location. One of the things that have been discussed was should ADUs or accessory apartments be allowed within all our residential zoning districts? Are there certain areas in town where we think they shouldn't be located? Or there are certain areas in town where we think they shouldn't be located? Not suggesting one way or the other, but the topic was brought up. The bright yellow is our 25,000 square foot. The tan color is our 40,000 square foot. And the orange on the right is our RS40, which is really our most restrictive residential zoning district in the Bass River historic district area. So you can see that a lot of tan and a lot of yellow. We have a lot of residential areas in our town.
Any comments on this? There had been, yeah, Linda?
Oh, can I just give you the mic, Linda? I'm sorry. Thanks.
Are there any, are there going to be any limitations because of flood zones?
We have not talked about that. I'm sorry, we have not talked about that right now. I do know that that's something that's a restriction in the town at Dennis, that it can't be located in a flood zone. But that's certainly something that the board can discuss. Is that something that you're recommending?
I think it should be something that we look at.
Anyone else online? Okay. Mr. Beasley, did we answer your question?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. We did have a question.
Mr. Beasley? He's not answering. Okay. Maybe we did.
Let's assume we did.
So what's next? You know, there's a lot of information to digest. The planning board is going to start drafting and vetting some zoning amendments for further discussion in January and February. The problem is if we want to proceed to 2023 Annual Town Meeting, which is the last Tuesday in April, we're going to need to do a lot of work in January and February. We're going to have to have our public hearing in March. And then, as I said, the Annual Town Meeting is in April. So if you have further comments, obviously, attend the planning board's meetings as well, January 4th, January 18th. We may need to add some extra meetings because we have a lot of public hearings on the 18th that are going to take up most of that meeting. So keep an eye on the town website, and you can always get in touch with me at kwilliams@yarmouth.us.
Susan?
Yes, Kathy, just to be clear, after the residents have an opportunity to digest this and come up with additional questions, they should forward them to you?
Yeah.
Okay. Based on the topics we discussed tonight and other, okay.
Pro and con.
And if...
Pro and con.
Yes.
No comments, negative comments, all comments.
I think we're looking for general, I just want to emphasize that, you know, the planning board is starting to red-line edit and draft. So we're looking for provisions. We're looking for actual suggestions. Because I think the board does feel that we need to move forward with something, some expansion of the ADUs. So the more, you know, what would make you feel more comfortable, some tweaking and that type of thing. But we're really looking for mitigation suggestions. Not just I don't like it, or I love it.
So any help you can offer us, especially any of you who represent neighborhood groups that have an important voice here. If it's possible, addressing your remarks, Ms. Volger, if it's possible for you to presume that there would be good enforcement, what are the elements of this that your association and any others that might be represented here would like to see that would be favorably, you'd be favorably disposed to? It would be very helpful in our thinking if we could, you know, kind of put a ceteris paribus on enforcement and say, that is what it is, and it will be done. But what are the other things that we think a good ADU would include? If we could do that. Mary?
So, Madam Chair, will this PowerPoint be online for people to download and look at?
I'm happy to do that. I mean, yeah.
Well, I guess if people want a copy of it, can they email you?
Sure.
Okay. Just because I know there's homeowner organizations, homeowner associations that are interested in just, you know, maybe zooming in or we'll watch this later. So they can get the PowerPoint from Kathy.
Maybe we can also try and get on something on the planning web, the town website under planning and have like a little ADU discussion topic.
There's some good stuff in that PowerPoint. Thank you, Kathy.
Agreed, thanks.
Madam Chair.
Any other?
It appears somebody's got their hand up there.
Mr. Nicconello?
Is it?
They're fighting. Yes, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted, just to point out, thank you very much for this comment. You know, since the '70s, our population for our children have not increased. And I just wanted to say that, you know, these ADUs will be for the people that really don't have the small children, the working people that, you know, go to the grocery store, work behind the counter, the drugstores, the service people, the coffee shops. Our families are not what they used to be coming here in our town. You know, you go back, I think it was like 3,400 children back in the '70s, and I think our number is even lower as of this year. So I just wanted to make that comment, that the ADUs will not be primarily for families. You know, they may have a starter, and then they may move on. But I think most of these accessory apartments are for people that, for the elderly, number one, and also for the people that work in our stores and services, the needs that we look to acquire. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nicconello. Any other hands raised, Kathy?
Nick Neets?
Mr. Neets?
Mr. Neets, I think you're muted.
I'm sorry. I thought I was automatically muted by you. I thank you for tonight. I think it's very good to hear the conversation begin. I think probably, though, I'm a little disappointed that, I heard Kathy Williams mention a couple of times that you were proposing amendments, and I presume that's to the citizens' petition. And I wondered whether you had made that decision to amend what was proposed or to begin with a new bylaw to present to the town meeting.
Our approach, Mr. Neets, from the planning board, is we will be amending our existing zoning bylaw.
Okay, so it's not amending the citizens' petition, it's amending the existing bylaw?
Correct.
Okay. That makes a lot of sense. That makes a lot more sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your support.
Vita Morris.
Ms. Morris? Hello, Vita.
Vita Morris. Is there any chance at all of losing the by-right concept in this project?
It's part of the discussion.
I'm not, we're not prepared to answer that question right now. Vita, the planning board is deliberating all of the comments and information we've received today. I would say anything is possible. We're a pretty open-minded group. We'd like to think we are. So I'm not in a position to be able to answer that right now. But anything is possible.
Thank you. Thank you.
Joe, Glenn?
Mr. Glenn?
Yes, and thank you. I did previously leave out that, I think it's fantastic that you're allowing this discussion and you're open to the discussion. And the only thing more that I would like to offer is, if you are going to go forward, especially with your short fuse for the annual town meeting, and for the practicality for the building department and for the health inspectors and for the project or any of the units going forward, is to think smaller. Because you can always come back in another town meeting and add on or expand. But if you fail in the beginning because you're too broad and too expansive and you don't have enough personnel on enforcement, you will ruin it, or not, you won't ruin it, but it will be tainted by the original decision. So I think smaller is better. And then hopefully, if it's successful, you could expand it. But that's just my suggestion. I look forward to seeing what comes forward at the annual town meeting. But thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn.
That's it.
I believe that's it from our remote participants. I'd like to thank all of you for coming today. We really do appreciate you coming out on a kind of a lousy afternoon. And we look forward to further engagement. We really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, we did good.